Your patience, we will now come back into open session. And we are going to, before I have Mayor or Councilmember Tejeda lead us in the invocation and the pledge, we do have readjustment or a change of our agenda. We're going to have public comment ahead of our presentations, okay? All right, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Please join me in invocation. We would please bow our heads in remembrance of the officer from Baldwin Park who lost his life in the line of duty. Not only to the officer, but to everyone who has lost their life on their way to work, on their way home from work, on the way to visit someone, a loved one, on their way to the hospital to see birth of a new child, or to receive someone. Let's let us remember that life is precious, no matter who you are, and that it's important for us to honor and respect each other as human beings. This month, there are many graduations either that have occurred or that are going to occur. And as my heartfelt prayer, that every family, every student, every teacher, and everyone who attends those ceremonies, not only make it to the ceremony, but also make it home safely. These tragic events that happen either locally or nationally around the world, they do affect each and every one of us. For a life that is lost is a life that will be cherished forever. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam City Attorney, can you please give us a report on closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one, in closed session, the city council approved a settlement, mutual agreement, and general lease of all claims between the city of Redlands and Alexis de Leon pursuant to the following material terms. City shall pay de Leon these sum of $125,000 within 30 days of receipt of a fully executed settlement agreement by all parties. Two, de Leon shall release city from any and all claims in connection with the government claim that she filed. Once fully executed agreement will be on file with the city clerk's office. The motion to approve the settlement, mutual agreement, and general lease of all claims agreement was made by Mayor Pro Tem Shaw and seconded by Councilmember Tejeda and passed unanimously. For items two, three, four, and five, there were no reportable actions.
Thank you for that report. We're going to put a pause on the G, on the agenda, and go into our public comments. The first public comment I have is for Steve Rogers.
Honorable Mayor Tejeda, Redlands City Council, Steve Rogers, Church Street.
That's Mayor Sosito.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Sosito. Oops. Yeah, that's. Anyway, I wanted to make comments about a communication that I sent over. Hopefully, everyone has gotten that communication. And it's regarding some of the changes that I'm, that are being made on one of the items tonight. But at the planning commission, I read a statement about the, something that's in our municipal, Redlands Municipal Code. And basically, it talks about, I'll just go ahead and read it. The city council shall, by majority vote, have the right to call up the tentative map for city council review at a city council meeting by a request to the community development director, which must be made within 21 days of the final action by the planning commission or the date of the of the city council's next regularly scheduled meeting after the planning commission's decision. Now, what I, and I made public comment at the at the planning commission meeting about this, because if this this particular process has been utilized, basically, that would be you all are taking a vote outside of an open city council meeting, and that's a violation of the Brown Act. So I'm really interested in how this kind of, plus, not having a map called up to city council would be a violation of the Subdivision Map Act. And the reason I say that, and I, I spoke with Dan McHugh at length about this, rest in peace, and he even gave me the code section which allows for this to happen. So I'm requesting that, you know, you all take a good hard look at this. And I mean, if I if I can't find out from staff exactly how this is occurring, then I'm going to have to do a public corrections request, I guess, to find out how this calling up of the maps is is being done. Because it's being done outside of public view, really, the city manager, our staff is obviously having to orchestrate this, but the city manager should have been aware that this is inconsistent with with law. And even though apparently it was created before he got here, he should not, you know, be causing Brown Act violations to occur. Thank you.
Next speaker, Del Barret.
Speaking about the closing, possible closing of Garden Street. I live on Garden Hill. I live on Garden Street, and I've used the Garden Hill for 50 years now, and I haven't encountered any kind of problem, and I haven't seen anyone speeding, or actually haven't seen any trucks on there either. I know trucks are there occasionally, but the only trucks I've seen are those who are doing gardening work or landscaping work. Garden Hill seems quite safe. People do stop at the stop signs. And when they enter Garden Street from Garden Hill, they better stop because Garden Street is very, very busy. It's a main street, you know, heavy traffic. I know when I get out of my driveway, which I live in Garden Street, it's a challenge to get out because the traffic is heavy, especially during work hours. And Garden Street receives traffic, especially when people are going to work and they want to take the freeway. It's easy access to the freeway. If that is blocked, you're going to have more traffic jams down by the schools and everything else with all the people who cannot get access to the freeway to get to work. I find it unnecessary to close Garden Hill. The people who are complaining about it live on Garden Hill, but Garden Hill has been there for over 50 years because I've been using it for 50 years. So I know it's been there quite a long time without problems. There's more traffic, there's more traffic all over Redlands. And it's useful for the people on emergencies, emergency vehicles, ambulances, and also the fire station people. The fire station is right on Garden Street. So I want you to consider all these factors and consider keeping it open because it's a necessary facility.
Good evening, city council members and Mayor Sosito. Thank you for this time. My name is Nancy Blastos. I live at 1681 Garden Street. I feel negatively concerned about closing Garden Hill Road. I have lived here since 2020. I have used this road to reach the 10 repeatedly. I am aware that the road is narrow and winding, but I have had no dangerous feelings about navigating it because I use caution. I turn my head side to side and practice defensive driving. It strikes me as a power grab that the residents on that road want it closed to create their own little quiet community. The house on the corner of Garden Hill and Garden Street has expanded exponentially, so it seems like it's gobbling up that area on the road. I believe a new road and two houses were built across the street and developed into large family dwellings since 2020. My point is that the buyers must have traveled Garden Hill Road many times before making a decision to buy there. If it felt unsafe, why would they buy there? The hubris to close the public road to others, knowing what area these families were buying into, makes no sense. I'm a taxpayer, a citizen. I have the right to use public roads. It is not a private road, nor should it be. At my age, I use it to access many doctor's appointments, unfortunately, and I ask you to leave it open. Solutions, police, the no truck sign, there are tons of trucks that come down there that aren't supposed to be, and they do it all the time. Enforce a 15 mile per hour speed limit, the city would amass a fortune in traffic fines. This road does not have a monopoly on weekend partiers, believe me. On Garden Street has its share. About 15 years ago, on graduation weekend, a sports car landed in our front yard doing a 180 and destroying our fence. Do not close Garden Hill Road. It sets a dangerous precedent. Upper income people don't make these decisions for the rest of us. Thank you.
Roger Ebervast.
My name's Roger Ebervast.
Ebervast, apologize.
No, no apology necessary. Good evening, city council and Mayor Sosito. I too am voicing a negative opinion on closing of the Garden Hill Drive. The, in addition, I think, you know, the traffic that's on Garden Street is, as Del had mentioned, there's a lot of traffic, it's loud, and there are many cars that exceed the speed limit and can tell by the sound of it and by observation when I'm out in the yard and see these people zipping by. I would like to request that stop signs be installed at the intersection of Garden Hill Drive and Garden Street to, because these people have a straight shot all the way from the country club, all the way down to Highland Avenue. So there's no reason for them to try to slow down, plus, it's downhill. The police could set up a speed trap just down the just down the hill from Garden Hill Drive where it widens out, and I'm sure they would be able to, you know, generate quite a bit of revenue from from that, from enforcing that speed limit. Thank you.
Michael Johnson.
And maybe I can address some of the, the Traffic and Parking Commission did receive a request, a citizen request to close Garden Hill Drive, and after a lengthy deliberation, they decided not to make a recommendation to the city council. So the TPC considers that matter closed. The applicant could come directly to the council, but for now, there is no plan to close Garden Hill Drive.
Since the TPC and staff both do not recommend this, it would not come to the council unless a council member asks for it to be agendized.
Thank you for your patience. All right. So there's three lights up there. There's a green, an orange, and a red light, so you have three minutes, and it'll tell you when you're close to your, yellow light will show you that you have about 30 seconds left.
Okay, so hello. My name is Michael Johnson, and I wrote a proposal to build a theme park for the, oh my gosh, for Highland and Redlands. The idea came from the fact that I noticed there was like a lot of Amazon factories popping up around the city, but there were also a lot of entrepreneurial schools popping up around the city as well. So I just felt like there wasn't a good contrast for the creative community within our, within our county. So I wrote a proposal that, oh, my goodness, I wrote a proposal so that we could build a theme park, and that way we could diversify the job opportunities for our community, and then also just give us something fun to do. Because truthfully, as a youth, I'm 26, I love going to the casino, but I don't have that much money to waste. And if I'm going to waste my money, I'd rather do it at a theme park, if I'm just being plain and honest. I also have here like concepts and designs. I'm not sure if I can show you guys that, but is that possible?
Go ahead and finish your comments, and then we'll have somebody follow up with you after your comments.
Okay. Well, also, besides the concept and designs, I also have the proposal here. Do I leave that with someone else?
So somebody, a staff person will contact you after you finish your public comments to follow up with you, okay?
Okay, all right. Well, besides that, I'm not too sure what else to say. I did a lot of work with Meta AI and like some friends within the community as well. So, yeah.
Thank you for, thank you for all that. Thank you so much. Joshua Hoff.
Because it's Pride Month, I'd like to talk about a group of Christians in CHAZ Seattle, Washington that were assaulted last week by violent militant LGBTQ+ activists. The FBI is investigating a Seattle event in which LGBTQ and Christian activists squared off on Tuesday with eight people being arrested. We have asked our team to fully investigate allegations of targeted violence against religious groups at the Seattle concert. Deputy FBI Director Dan Bongino wrote on X after the May 27th, "Freedom of Religion Isn't a Suggestion." The investigation comes after an estimated 750 protesters joined dueling demonstrations on Tuesday outside of Seattle City Hall. About 500 people were there for the Rattle in Seattle, a combination protest and worship event affiliated with May Day USA, a fundamentalist group that does not support transgender ideologies, identities, and the Don't Mess With Our Kids movement. A smaller group turned out to protest the event holding signs with slogans like trans rights or humans' rights. Eight people in total were arrested for assault during the event. Seattle police said no injuries were reported. Two opposing groups gathered along Fourth Avenue, the police said in a statement. Streets around the dueling demonstrations were shut down for several hours but reopened just before 8:00 PM. The religious group arrived outside City Hall first and reportedly occupied space behind a barricade along with their private security, partially limiting access to the City Hall steps. It just so happened that this group came and set up their sound equipment and occupied the area first, Seattle Police Captain Robert Brown told the Seattle Times. Video of the event shows dueling groups of demonstrators engaged in arguments with each other as well as protesters shoving back and forth with police. The Rattle in Seattle came about in protest of how the city handled another May Day affiliated event over the weekend where 23 people were arrested on Saturday during clashing demonstrations between similar groups at a Christian concert in Cal Anderson Park. Organizers condemned police handling of the event as well as comments from Seattle Mayor Bruce Harrow, who branded the concert a far-right rally intended to provoke reaction by promoting beliefs that are adhered that inherently impose to our city's values in the heart of Seattle's most prominent LGBTQ+ neighborhood. May Day said the comments were false accusations and attempts to limit the freedom of Christian worship in a statement on Instagram. The group has accused the city of denying a request to hold the original event at Victor Steinbruck Park, while the city insists it rejected a request to host the original event on a series of streets unable to accommodate the gathering. Gathering that Cal Anderson Park was available met the size of logistic needs available for the event, it was granted. Harrow spokesman Cal Craighead told KUOW, "This is consistent with free speech requirements in the First Amendment. Under the Trump administration, the Justice Department has removed, has moved away from traditional areas like protecting voting rights and fighting racial discrimination. That's not true." And has instead prioritized probing the participation of transgender athletes in girls' sports and fighting religious bigotry. Well, you eliminate girls from participating in their own sports by allowing men to compete as women. So, okay.
Peter Hall. Mr. Moderator, do we have any public comments on Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one other comment.
Okay, if you could hold on to our last public speaker here in the audience. Go ahead.
All right, so I want to talk about the incredible display of narcissism and emotional manipulation and blatant lying that I've seen from certain people at city council and school board meetings that I've attended. Last school board meeting I was at was like a couple weeks ago last month, and people there were upset because the school board was voting to remove certain books from the libraries and remove the pride flag and stuff like that. And people there were barraging the new school board members, Candy Olsen and Jeanette Olsen, and they were claiming without evidence that Candy Olsen had harassed a trans athlete at some sporting event in Riverside or something. They wouldn't identify who this athlete was, they wouldn't specify what Candy Olsen actually said to this athlete or about them. And all the evidence that had that Candy Olsen harassed this person was her public stance about how she thinks trans women, who are actually men, should not be in female sports. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, we're ready for the first public comment on Zoom.
Okay, Gregory Britton, it is your turn to speak.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good. This is the second time in the last month or so we've had a six-figure legal settlement. I don't know the facts of the case tonight. The last one was an employment case. Just seems to me, as an attorney, when I get involved early in the process, I really work to keep my clients out of, well clear of legal liability. And particularly with employment matters, you should be able to, with good counsel, negotiate that, complexities of that, without resulting in six-figure settlements to the taxpayers. The, today is the 100th anniversary of the case of Peers versus Society of, the Society of Sisters, where the Supreme Court recognized the primacy of parents in their role in guiding and raising and educating their children. Parental rights are under attack all across the country. We should remember that and recognize that while there are some bad parents out there, by and large, parents will overwhelmingly do a better job of raising children than the government. And I'll probably come up, my last item is the upcoming low carbon fuel standard. I don't know if anyone is aware of that. You just voted, you did a resolution last time on the attempt to take away our natural gas appliances. This one may even be worse because under new regulations that will take effect in July, low carbon fuel stand, for the old carbon fuel standards, it's going to raise our gas prices another 65 cents a gallon. That's going to hurt residents, particularly low-income residents, that hurt business, it's going to hurt everyone in the state of California. And already, just as of today, according to AAA, the average price for gas in California is $4.76 a gallon. Nationally, the average price, and that includes California in the average, is $3.17 a gallon. So if you don't want to pay 65 cents more a gallon, is what this council should weigh in on that, as it did with the natural gas appliances. And everyone who can hear and hear this information should immediately get on the phone, or tomorrow morning, get on the phone to their state legislators. The Republican legislators tried to move a bill to block this huge gas tax increase, but the Democrats unanimously blocked it. And if the Democrats go through with this, maybe we should all think about voting differently if you don't want to pay these kind of sky-high gas prices. I thought I have a public comment, but I also would like to address items two and three on the consent calendar. Thank you.
Next public comment on Zoom.
That was the last public comment.
Thank you. We'll now go to our presentations, and we have two Juneteenth proclamations, and we have one proclamation for Pride Month. And I'll go ahead and lead it off on, for our Juneteenth proclamation. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you fill out a speaker slip?
I did not, but I heard some things that I'd like to make a brief comment on if I may.
Yes, go ahead. And before you, or before you leave, please fill out a speaker slip, so we have a record of it.
I will do that. Michael Pastner, I just wanted to give a quick thanks to Councilmember Davis for doing the Pride Celebration proclamation. As we've all witnessed, sentiment against the LGBTQ community is very distressing. It's effectively becoming normalized. You know, how many proclamations, how many statements like this get rebuttals? It really seems like the trans community in particular is being vilified and judged and lied about. Trans people should be identified as they identify, not subject to the slander that that we just heard. So I just wanted to give my thanks to Councilmember Davis, and thank you also for doing the Juneteenth proclamation. It is appreciated. I also have to express a little bit of disappointment with Councilmember Tejeda. You're active on social media, you choose to promote certain events but not others. I noticed you promoted Juneteenth, which is great. Thank you. But considering your past support for the flying the pride flag, not putting a post about Pride Month is noticeable. It seems like your perspective on the LGBTQ community has changed in the past few years, not in a great way. And I think people will look back on this time, once the Trump era has passed, and people will ask, what did you do to support the LGBTQ community? And I think, I think your silence speaks volumes. And it hurts more because I know you used to support the LGBTQ community. You know better. You know what your silence means. So your silence, your silence hurts. Thank you.
Okay, I will go back and to our Juneteenth presentations, and I will start it off, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Davis for her two proclamations. So we're going to be honoring Dr. Donald R. Robinson of Community Missionary Baptist Church for this Juneteenth award. I'm going to read a little bit. I've got an extensive bio, but I believe we're just going to focus on some of the highlights. Obviously, he's a man of higher education. He's got his bachelor degree from the Christian and Christian and Business Administration, master of arts degree in Christian Counseling. He's got a doctorate of Divinity. Dr. Robinson, Pastor Dr. Robinson, has been preaching for 62 years, so he started out at a young age. He still looks rather young, though. He's been a pastor of a number of churches, from Houston to Los Angeles, two in Los Angeles, Oklahoma, Dayton, and Cleveland, Ohio. Currently, he's the pastor, as I mentioned, Community Missionary Baptist Church here in Redlands, going on 11 years. He's given quite, he's, contribution to our community, has improved the area in and around his church, and has a great and around his, his church, and has a great, uh, congregation, lively, with a lot of enthusiasm. He does a lot of community work, backpack giveaways. I believe he also hosted a barbecue for, for the, for our police department. I've had the honor of being in attendance at his, at his church of two or three times. Mayor, or Eddie, uh, Councilmember Tejada was there, along with our police chief. But he also is also the current member of the Baptist Ministry Conference in Cleveland, Ohio. He's a current member of the Pastor and Ministry Conference in Cleveland, Ohio as well. And he is the current president of the Baptist Minister Conference of Los Angeles, of Southern California. He's a father of six children and a grandfather of seven grandchildren. Uh, if Mr. Robinson, Dr. Robinson can join me up front, and we have a proclamation, and you can, Dr. Brenda Butler, if you want to join him as well, and, and also the, the deacons there. Dr. Robinson, thank you so much for, for accepting this, uh, Juneteenth award, and again, for all the things, all the community events that you hold in your community. Turn around. And I believe you said, uh, Dr. Brenda Butler was going to say a few words, or if you would like to say a few words.
Always good to have somebody good to help make you better. And to have my chief of staff here. I put something together this evening to say to this city council. I love y'all very much, and I have something I want to say to all of you.
Greetings to Mayor Sosido and the City Council. With sincere gratitude on behalf of Dr. Robinson and the Community Missionary Baptist Church family, we wish to thank you for the honor of receiving this proclamation on behalf of Juneteenth from the City of Redlands, its government, and city officials. This recognition is truly humbling and means a great deal to our church, as we continue to be a beacon light throughout the city and community. Community Missionary Baptist Church is deeply committed to serving our community through various initiatives, including children's church, youth mentoring, Bible classes and curriculum, leadership and ethics classes, multicultural and youth programs, family and individual counseling, as well as our normal worship and auxiliaries. Thank you again for your thoughtful consideration and for this prestigious recognition. We are deeply honored and committed to continuing the work with dedication and passion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
They got a picture together.
I wish I could stay, Mr. Mayor, but I got my Bible study.
You got some souls to save.
So I got the ghost of Bible study. All right. God bless y'all, okay? Thank y'all so much. Thank you so much.
I have to, uh, say, Dr. Robinson, I had the honor of honoring you for your sixty years and with your church, and, um, I hope I didn't spoil things and try to sing, because you have, you have great. Anyway, thank you and congratulations.
I would like to invite Daphne Hawkins up to the front. I have the honor of presenting her with the Juneteenth proclamation. I'm going to read just a little bit of the proclamation, but as always, you can find these on our city website. "Juneteenth: Whereas the City of Redlands recognizes Juneteenth as a citywide celebration on Thursday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, in recognition of the day news reached the Black community in Texas of their emancipation from slavery on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, also known as Juneteenth Independence Day or Emancipation Day." Again, find the rest of it on our website. It's a great proclamation, and now it's my honor to talk to you a little bit about Daphne. Daphne A. Hawkins is the very embodiment of purpose, resilience, and vision. A true definition of a modern-day superwoman who wears many hats with grace, grit, and unwavering conviction. With an unshakable commitment to social justice, Daphne has devoted her life and career to the advancement of workers, women, and youth, particularly young women of color. Currently, Daphne serves as a labor relations consultant at Stanford University's Lucille Packard Children's Hospital. She is also the founder and president of the Love Program, Living and Overcoming with Virtue and Excellence, a transformative nonprofit that uplifts and empowers young women of color who are at risk in high school and throughout college. And I want to say too, I, I know Daphne and her husband Channing. They are relatively new residents of Redlands and they have hit the ground running since they've moved here. They've really been addressing racism within our schools and building community in Redlands, and I am so grateful for your leadership and your love of our community. Thank you so much.
Wow. Well, first off, thank you. It's truly an honor. Thank you to the city council members as well, all of you. I know that you do a lot of great work as well with the city. I do have a few words that I wrote down. So I stand before you deeply humbled and honored to receive this Juneteenth proclamation from the City of Redlands. I want to thank you not only for this recognition, but for taking a stand to uplift the legacy of Juneteenth and what it represents for so many of us. I accept this award on behalf of the women and children I serve throughout this region in San Bernardino, Redlands, Hesperia, um, and also in Rialto in LA. At the Love Program in particular, we serve young girls ages thirteen to twenty-five, and the girls that we serve are our most vulnerable youth. Um, those are our youth that are foster care youth, foster, um, youth that are previously incarcerated youth, so we partner with probation, and also those young ladies who just really need extra support and help. So thank you for that. We provide wraparound services, starting with our Leadership Academy and all, a host of different services that we provide to them. But all in all, I have to say, thank you to the Redland City Council for your leadership, for your vision, and your willingness to honor this history. By recognizing Juneteenth, you are not just acknowledging the past, you are helping to shape a future rooted in justice, equity, and unity. I accept this proclamation with deep gratitude, and I recommit myself to doing the work with humility, with love, and with the unwavering belief that together, we can build a better tomorrow. Thank you all.
Channing?
And I have to say really quickly, I think all of you can hear me. I cannot do this work without the support of my husband and my family, my children. Um, so I just, I wanted to say thank you publicly.
Like I said, my name isn't really Channing, it's just Japanese husband. And so I'm glad to just be able to stand in the picture.
So I think it's, uh, appropriate to also announce that, uh, June twenty-first at Sylvan Park, the City of Redlands is hosting its annual Juneteenth celebration from ten to five o'clock, Sylvan Park, June twenty-first. Come join us, everyone's welcome. All right, thank you.
Just going to move right on to the next proclamation. It is now my honor to invite Salem Clawthorne up to the front to, um, receive the LGBTQ+ Pride Month proclamation. So again, I'm going to read a little bit of the proclamation and talk to you a little bit about Salem. "Whereas the City of Redlands is a diverse community, including its LGBTQ-plus residents, and welcomes people of many backgrounds, in the belief that a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community through inclusion, justice, and love. And whereas many of the residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the City of Redlands, who are part of the LGBTQ-plus community, contribute to the vitality and enrichment of the city. And whereas the Stonewall uprising was one of the most prominent gatherings for persons of diverse backgrounds and interests to come together in a unified voice to call for change and progress in LGBTQ-plus civil rights." Again, find the rest of it on our city website. I just am so honored to present this to you, Salem. I thought it would be great to give this to someone from the University of Redlands, my alma mater, so I reached out to President Kristen Newkirk, and I said, "Who would you recommend to receive a proclamation?" And the president of the university recommended you, Salem, uh, which is a great honor, and you are so deserving and so wonderful. And also a fun fact, we discovered via email, Salem took a course of mine years ago when I was teaching at the University of Redlands. So it's an honor to present this to a former student of mine. Salem Clawthorne is a queer artist, writer, and musician. Her passions and life stem from the adversity she has overcome as a woman with chronic illness. Self-expression and creative thinking have always flowed naturally from Salem, and as such, she has used her unique perceptions of the human experience to enhance the world's beauty. Despite her disabilities, she has produced vivacious works of art, soulful music, and contemplative writings. She is a stalwart advocate for subversive compassion and encourages community building and emotional growth through goal-oriented action and regenerative relationships. She also tends to get carried away when visiting plant nurseries. Salem is humbled by each new person she meets and feels endlessly hopeful for her and her community's futures. And she's also a recent graduate of the University of Redlands. Just a couple more things on the University of Redlands. We have Sandy Vasquez, who's the vice president of Student Affairs from U of R here. I was just on campus yesterday where they are proudly flying the pride flag, so go visit that, at the admin building on campus. Salem, it's my honor to present you with this year's LGBTQ Pride Month proclamation.
Thank you so much, Denise. It's a great honor to be here. I have a couple remarks prepared. Thank you for this proclamation. I, uh, I'm honored to receive it on behalf of our beautiful LGBTQIA Two Spirit Plus community, and humbled to stand or sit before you all. Today marks a turning point, a chance to usher in an era of possibility, of change. Change often fills us with fear, fear of what might happen, fear of who we may become. We watch, we wait, we scrutinize, and in doing so, the world often changes us. We forget how we used to celebrate our differences. Strangers morph into monsters. Fear takes root. But today is different. I take pride not only in being a queer trans woman, but knowing I can celebrate my community. Pride is about love, honor, and loyalty to an identity that has been under near constant attack since New York City's first pride parade fifty-five years ago. There is valor in our shared experiences. With this proclamation, Redlands honors its queer community, but it also promises to uphold its ideals: love, equity, liberation, inclusivity, healing, and justice. And while today demonstrates a brave and tremendous step toward equality in our community, the internet and mass media has slowly but surely influenced us into thinking that segregation, the idea that what is separate is therefore equal, was not in fact a terrible choice. It has become so ingrained in our daily lives that the idea of coming together for a common purpose seems foreign and unrealistic, but we're better than this. We don't have a choice in who we've been until now, but we always have a choice in who we can be tomorrow. We are better than excluding from people from daily life. As a country, how can we celebrate this month of beautiful, diverse people without first coming to grips with how our queer community suffers at the hands of our local, state, and federal leaders? We are seeing the real-time erasure of our culture, from repealing civil rights for transgender people in Idaho to banning queer books in Florida. Worse still, the House has passed the big, beautiful bill. It would strip federally funded gender-affirming care for all two hundred and seventy-six thousand transgender Americans enrolled in Medicaid. As you can infer by my chair, I am one of these recipients. I need that health care in order to survive, and without any hormones, I could potentially die from the shock my body would experience. I feel terrified, but I refuse to be petrified because I know we are better than this. It's wonderful that we're holding this first step in celebrating our community, and there is much we can do together to reverse the tide of active queerphobia and transphobia in our local community. We have a chance to rewrite the equation. Redlands can be a bastion for those in need, and this proclamation is a meaningful gesture to get that ball rolling, but it will take more than just visibility, more than just recognition. Those times are a decade or better behind us. It will require each of us to think, to come together with people that might make us feel uncomfortable or angry, for a future that embraces its diverse peoples and to defend us in our hours of need. All of us bring something unique, beautiful, and brilliant to the table. Whether you are conservative, liberal, or otherwise, denying ourselves our old ideals of forging the great American melting pot would be a tragedy unto itself. Hell, it already has been. It starts here. You have so much power to change your world, and your local government is one of the most impactful places to make a difference. Shelter those in need from the storms ahead by electing fighters and defenders. Build your community with those societies attempting to isolate, atrophy, and kill off, and we will all emerge with blossoms. It's more beautiful than any one of us can imagine. This month ought not to be only a celebration of our cultures and resilience, but a protest to all of those who would prefer to see us absent from the public eye. Coming together and demanding a better quality of life for us all, especially those of us from disadvantaged communities like the queer community, will allow us to flourish in the face persecution and prejudice. Celebrate, yes, but celebrate while recognizing the equity and liberty each and every one of us deserves. I have been honored to stand or sit here and speak before you, and I thank you and the City of Redlands for seeing our community and recognizing that visibility is a gateway to action. There is much left to accomplish, and the only way through this will be to show our humanity and compassion toward our neighbors. Let's redefine what it, what it means to be American by championing the collective strengths of us all and carry our community into a brighter future. Thank you.
So beautifully and powerfully said. Thank you so much, Salem. We're going to get a quick photo.
Next item on our agenda is communications. I don't believe we have any. Yes? Consent, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself. Okay, so we're consent items, we're pulling items two and three?
Move approval with the balance of the calendar.
Okay. Authorize the issuance of a proclamation declaring June nineteenth of twenty twenty-five as Juneteenth.
We need to get a.
Don't we need to vote?
I'm sorry, I'm, okay. We're going to go ahead and, and vote on the balance of the consent calendar. We had a motion and a second.
Yes, okay. Councilmember Barage?
Yes.
Councilmember Tejada?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw?
Yes.
And Mayor Sosido?
Yes. So.
I'll take two first.
Okay, so we're pulling items, uh, one, two, and three on the consent calendar. The, uh, to authorize issuance of a proclamation declaring June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as Juneteenth, uh, Mayor Sosido. issuance of a proclamation declaring June 19th, 2025 as Juneteenth, Mayor Sosido and Councilmember Davis.
Your speaker is Mr. Britton.
Mr. Britton.
On Zoom.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Slavery has been, was, was part of humanity as long as there've been humans on this planet. What was different in the West, in America, is that we ended. And it's a great, for America, for the world, ending of slavery was a great accomplishment, here done at tremendous cost. 595,000 Union soldiers were killed, wounded, and missing in that effort. So it seems a little bit odd to me that we want to exemplify and memorialize this great accomplishment by an obscure event of some former slaves in Texas learning about the Emancipation Proclamation two months after the end of the Civil War. Instead of focusing on the people who really accomplished it, the aforementioned Union soldiers, the abolition movement that for decades fought the cause politically and socially before the Civil War, the people in Kansas and other places that fought the undeclared Civil War before the actual Civil War. And these people would be much better memorialized, understood, and mentioned rather than this obscure event that's based on the basis of June 19th. History tells us that there were great men and women who sacrificed everything for the cause, who demonstrated their bravery, but intersectional malaise keeps us from imparting those stories. Well, we should impart those stories. The sense of understanding where we came from and what happened is vitally important to any country. As Ronald Reagan said, if we forget what we did, we won't know who we are. And also, usually, the whole story of slavery is not taught. That slaves that were brought here were sold into slavery by the fellow Africans. Beforementioned history of slavery that was ended here in the West, that Muslim pirates on the North Coast of Africa captured more Europeans and Americans and put them into slavery, that were brought as slaves into what is now the United States of America, that freed blacks in the South owned slaves, like about half the way the whites and so on. There's a whole series of history that usually doesn't get taught as part of the story of slavery. So we should remember the entire story of slavery, not just this one little obscure event as part of that much larger and very memorial, memorable and important story. Thank you.
Okay. Is that the only comment we have for the consent calendar and item two? Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's the only comment we have currently.
Okay, so for item number three, it's the authorize, authorize the issuance of a proclamation recognizing June 2025.
Mayor, you need to adopt.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we have to vote on.
Okay.
I move approval of...
Item two.
Authorized issuance of proclamation declaring June 19th as, 2025 as Juneteenth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Berge.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosido.
Yes. Now we'll go to item three on the consent calendar, authorized issuance of a proclamation recognizing June 2025 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Mr. Moderator's public comment or the consent calendar comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Greg Britton, it is, again, your turn to speak.
Evening again. As I addressed last time, the vast majority of Americans do not care what people do in their own, in their personal relations. People, you know, as adults, do what you want to do. The Lord may weigh in at some point, as he may with all of us, but we will leave that to you and him. We really, really, really don't care who you're having your personal relationships with or what you do when you're consenting adults. And there's good examples of that in the current, in the Donald Trump administration. We got Scott Besant, Rick Brunell, and Tammy Bruce, who are all of that persuasion, but we don't care. They're all doing a good job at what they've been selected to do. But whether it really makes sense to honor, have a month-long celebration for people's choices in their personal relations, I've never understood that. If we're gonna honor anyone, we should honor married heterosexual couples or children who are actually propagating the human race. And as we know, birth rates across the world are falling, and particularly in the West, are way below replacement rates. If anyone's gonna be honored, it's them. Now, if any of you are believing Christians, you should not honor, promote sinful conduct. You may say, yes, you have, you're free to engage in that, as the Lord gives you that kind of freedom. But if you're a believing Christian, you should not promote. As Jesus said after he saved the woman from being stoned to death for adultery, he said, "Go and sin no more," which was an act of love, not of hate. But he did not say, hey, let's go have adultery, let's go have Adultery Pride Month. Let's go have an Adultery Pride Parade. No. So if you're believing Christian, you should not support this. And the last part of this is fundamentally different. Not what adults choose in their personal life, but when you want to pretend or you have a delusion and think you're the opposite gender. The truth is, two plus two is four. Earth revolves around the sun, and XX does not equal XY. And that truth is not a phobia. It is not hate. It is truth. And if you want to dress up in the opposite gender, fuck, I don't care. But you don't get to intrude on girls' sports. You don't get to intrude in girls' locker rooms. And the rest of us do not have to lie and say that a woman is a man or that a man is a woman. Alexander Solzhenitsyn, the famous Soviet dissident, wrote a piece, a famous essay, "Live not by lies." And for those of us such as myself, we are not going to... Can I lose this? Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I was like, I dropped off. So we're not gonna lie. Men are men, women are women. You cannot change, you cannot change in between, and that's not a phobia. That's not hate. It's truth.
Thank you. Need a motion?
Move to authorize the issuance of a proclamation recognizing June 2025 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Berge.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosido.
Yes. Okay, moving on now to item J, communications.
We have no communications.
All right, thank you. Now moving on to item K, public hearings. A public hearing to consider the following matters concerning the 2021-2029 Housing Element rezoning project, implementing the Housing Element Program 111. I declare this an open public hearing meeting, and I call on Development Services Brian Desatnick for a report.
Thank you, Mayor Sosido. I'm gonna invite Kevin Berry, our senior planner, to make this presentation.
We do, yeah.
Before the staff presentation, I think Councilmember Davis was going to announce...
Thank you so much. I will be abstaining from voting on the proposed rezone of parcels 0292-165-10 and 0292-167-02, as they are located within 500 feet from my residence.
So if those two parcels are pulled out for individual discussion by the council, then Councilmember Davis will step out while you have that discussion. Otherwise, under segmentation, she can participate in the balance of this discussion. Okay?
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The proposal before you is a series of changes to the city's land use and zoning maps necessary to implement the adopted six-cycle housing element. Specifically, the rezoning addresses the shortfall of housing units identified in the housing element sites and inventory, which currently lacks sufficient residential capacity under the existing zoning to meet the city's state-manded share of the regional housing needs, or RENA. A few points of background. In 2021, the Southern California Association of Governments finalized the RENA and assigned Redlands a housing production share of just over 3,500 dwelling units for the present cycle. In 2022, the city council adopted the sixth-cycle housing element, which was subsequently certified by the State Housing Department. And to accommodate the housing site's shortfall, the housing element includes a rezoning program with a statute-imposed deadline for completion. Shown here is a breakdown of the RENA numbers by household income affordability levels. And in order to accommodate any potential development shortfall, such as if a site wasn't developed to its full potential under the zoning, a 20% buffer was added, which brings the Redlands share just over 4,200 dwelling units. Shown here is an excerpt from Program 1.1-1 of the adopted housing element, which provides the directive to rezone enough land to provide a capacity for the RENA numbers. And here's an overall map showing the sites of the rezoning, of the rezoned parcels. Most of the land is located in West Redlands, on the south side of Citrus Avenue, extending beyond Nevada and Alabama streets. And the remaining properties are distributed through North Redlands. And here are some focused areas that more precisely show the location and boundaries of the rezoned parcels. Here's the existing and proposed zoning maps for the parcels on the west side of Redlands. Currently, the sites are located in the East Valley Corridor specific plan and are zoned commercial-industrial, with the exception of Site 8, which is currently zoned multifamily residential. All but two of the sites would be removed from the specific plan and be rezoned to R2 or R3 multifamily residential. Site 8 would remain in the specific plan, but it would be upzoned from EV 3,000 RM to EV 25 RM to increase the allowed density on-site. And here are the zoning map changes for the north parcels. Three of the parcels are located in the concept, concept plan number four area of the East Valley Corridor specific plan, while the other lots are zoned residential or agricultural. Again, all of these sites would be rezoned to either R2 or R3 residential, multifamily residential. Summary, here are the key findings from staff's analysis. As outlined in the staff report, the rezoning will directly implement the program within the adopted housing element and advance various general plan objectives by focusing future residential development on infill sites. As required by CEQA, or as required for zoning map amendments, the project underwent environmental review, and the department prepared a subsequent EIR to the EIR prepared for the 2035 general plan. The timeline for the subsequent EIR is shown here for your reference. As required by CEQA, the EIR analyzes various environmental factors, including air quality, transportation utilities, and public services. Due to its programmatic nature, the EIR utilizes a comparative approach based on the hypothetical build-out under the existing versus proposed zoning in order to evaluate the project impacts. Several factors were scoped out of the EIR, including aesthetics, biological resources, and wildfire risk, because they were previously, previously analyzed in the general plan EIR, and there were no changes to the project or environment which warranted further analysis. The EIR concludes that of the topic areas evaluated, the project would cause or continue to cause significant and unavoidable impacts based on 11 criteria relating to agricultural resources, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and transportation with respect to vehicle miles After circulating the draft EIR, the city received a total of two written comments from the State Department of Conservation and the County Public Works Department. As required by CEQA, the final EIR is accompanied by responses to agency comments, findings of fact for each environmental effect identified, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and a statement of overriding considerations. Because the EIR concludes the project would result in significant and unavoidable impacts, under CEQA, the city is required to adopt a statement of overriding considerations explaining why the project's benefits outweigh the environmental risks prior to approving the project. Listed here are several legal and economic considerations identified for approval of the project, and three previously identified considerations from the general plan EIR continue to apply to this rezoning. The Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of the proposed zoning and related actions at its regular meeting on April 22nd. And provided here are three separate motions if the council decides to agree with the commission and approve the rezoning. Staff and the city's environmental consultant are available to address any questions, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the city council? I had one. On the parcels that are agricultural right now, are those private property? And how does that process work to include those in our RENA numbers if they're private property or agricultural right now?
Well, all of these parcels are private property that are being rezoned. Those parcels currently are zoned industrial, and they're being proposed to change from industrial to residential. So the long-term plan under the current general plan and zoning was never for them to remain as agricultural parcels.
Okay, thank you. And I think you already, Mr. Berry, answered the question about the letter that we received from the county's flood control.
Correct. And staff had time to review that comment letter and decided that many of the concerns could be addressed at actual development review. Since this is limited to a rezoning, no immediate development is proposed. So we would need an actual construction proposal to review before addressing their comments.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? It says the next thing to do is call for the applicant or his or her representative, but we're the applicant. Okay, so I'll now go to our, if there aren't any further questions or comments on our city council. Thank you, Mr. Berry. I'll call on Steve Rogers for a public comment or for a comment on this, on this item.
Mayor Sosido, Reverend City Council, Steve Rogers, Church Street. Now, I was at the Planning Commission, and I believe I saw this item being talked about, but now it's totally a different item. I just don't, I don't get it, but I'm gonna go ahead and still make some comments here. This, this item, or this rendition of this item, talks about removing properties from the specific plans, where that's one of the things I have a real question about, because, I mean, they're in a, in a specific plan for a reason. My understanding is that if you remove them from a specific plan, then they would need to be in, going into another specific plan or, or something of that nature. So that part of this doesn't make any sense to me. The, the other things that I saw at the Planning Commission, the other changes to the code and whatnot, I'm not sure if they're still involved with this item. The, the things that I had a real problem with and that are not being displayed here, and maybe they've been taken out of the item, but they had to do with lot splits, lot line adjustments, that type of thing. Basically, if those things are still in this item, I object to them. So maybe, maybe Mr. Desatnick can give me a clue on this.
Those were presented to the Planning Commission as a completely separate item from this, and that they will be coming to the city council as a separate item next month.
All right. So from that perspective, again, I, I thought it was all one item when I was looking at, at the Planning Commission. And, and I, and I, and I still have a real problem with this move. And, and I'll tell you, the main reason why, and something you all have heard, except for Mr. Shaw possibly, or he probably heard it when he was on the Planning Commission, is that the general plan is not in the, in any kind of condition that is... general plan is not in the, in any kind of condition that is acceptable with regard, except for maybe the housing element. But that's all based on infrastructure elements that really were not produced to the level of engineering that they should have been. In fact, there's no engineering in them. With regard to the traffic studies, that, that, we didn't even, we, we required the consultants to give us what's called a traffic impact analysis, but then in the final document, that never happened. So this general plan is in horrible condition. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and city staff. First of all, thank you for considering this tonight. This is a big deal. 967 plus 615, that is how many units of very low and low-income housing the city is obligated to provide for and act to promote. Of those 1,580 units, I am wondering how many projects are under consideration or development at this moment? I fully support these proposed changes in the housing element, because they will enable 2,325 more residential housing units to be developed. That's a big deal. But, and I quote from the Agenda Item's Regional Housing Need and Needs Allocation Section, quote, "After receiving their RHNA assignment, local governments must adopt housing elements that plan accordingly for their RHNA allocation, as well as identify any necessary actions or programs to meet its allocation." So my question is, once this is approved, what necessary actions or programs are the city staff and council planning to implement? As you know, those 1,582, 82 units will take a concerted effort far beyond the approval of this plan. So I ask you, please, please make sure to implement those necessary actions and programs. Those who are no longer able to afford homes in Redlands will thank you, and I do too. Thank you.
Are there any comments on this item, Mr. Moderator?
No, Mr. Mayor, no comments on this item.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, have we received any written comments?
Yes, we received three written comments, one from Steve Rogers, who you've heard speak tonight, and Espy County Flood Control District, which Kevin addressed, and Amanda Frye, who was opposed to the rezoning projects.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to staff if you have any other rebuttal or comments to, to any comments. Okay. I'll close a public hearing. What's the wish of the council?
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 8687 to adopt and certify the final subsequent environmental impact report prepared for the project, including the findings of facts and statements of overriding consideration. Number two, I move that adopt Resolution Number 8688, 8689, 8690, to approve the general plan amendment, specific amendment, and concept plan amended. And I move to introduce Ordinance 2983 to amend the zoning map.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Barrage.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sasego.
Yes.
And then we note the abstention of Councilmember Davis to the rezoning of the parcels 0292-165-10 and 0292-167-02.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. So I will now go to Item K2, which is a public hearing to consider Resolution 8685, approving the issuance of a California Municipal Finance Authority Revenue Bond Series 2025, Human Good. I'll declare this an open meeting, meeting as a public hearing. Declare that the Tariff of Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, open as a public hearing, and call upon Director, the Director for a report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This public hearing is being held tonight pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFR. TEFR requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing is located, and that governing body approve the proposed financing. Human Good is seeking to obtain tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $205 million for refunding bonds and for financing various renovations and facility upgrades of continuing care communities located in several locations throughout California. An amount not to exceed $20 million of the financing will be used for financing and refinancing the acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping of Plymouth Village, a continuing care community located at 900 Salem Drive in Redlands. The California Municipal Finance Authority is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt to be issued by CMFA will be the sole responsibility of Human Good, and the city will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of that debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will bear no cost in the issuance of the proposed debt. This is a private loan with the borrower and their bank. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA for the benefit of Human Good. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFR, the Code, and the California Government Code Section 6500. Tonight, it is my understanding that there are two representatives here representing the project, Jared Suzuki, financial advisor with CMFA, and also Michael Harrison, the executive director of Plymouth Village, is here representing Human Good. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. We're available if there's any questions.
Thank you, Director Garcia. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the city council?
I, I just want to remind everybody, because it's not, I'll get calls when anybody, every time they see tax on there, they think the citizens are gonna have to pay any taxes. No. I think Director Garcia explained it very well, that this is, this is not an, these are not obligation bonds that people voluntarily purchase, is that correct? All right, so there's no debt to the, to the taxpayers. I want people to understand that.
Okay, thank you. Our, let me see. I have a, a comment from Mr. Steven Rogers on this item.
Mayor Sasego, Reverend City Council, Steve Rogers, Church Street. Okay, I'm not opposed to this kind of thing. The only question I have is why this amount of two, over 200 million, or whatever it is, and then the, the one facility in Redlands is, is, the max is 20 million? I mean, I, I just don't, I don't get it. To me, maybe the other ones should be done in the other places that they're being developed. But maybe here, they can put them all together, and, you know, it just, I, I don't understand it. I really support Plymouth Village, and maybe I'll talk, speak with them about it after the meeting. But, I mean, that, it just seems peculiar to me that it would be, you know, 10 times the amount of, of the, of the amount of money they're gonna be able to spend in Redlands and, that they're getting, and for other projects throughout Southern California, why aren't they going with those projects to those specific entities? And even though there's no debt incurred, I would think that, you know, we don't want to be involved even in remotely, in, in a, in a project in another city, another entity that maybe fails. So just my two cents. Thank you.
Mayor and council, we're not opining on the projects in the other locations. I believe it's federal law that each location will have to certify themselves. Mr. Rogers, if he talks to them, I think he'll find that to be true.
Thank you.
Yes, I spoke to the CFO of Human Good today, and there are hearings like this at every single municipality in which a project that is a part of that $205 million funding is occurring. We're here because at Plymouth Village, there's an approximately $20 million piece of that 205 million, and therefore you must act in order to comply with the TEFR law. That's my understanding. Okay, having said that, I've been a volunteer for American Baptist Homes and now Human Good, a not-for-profit organization, for over 30 years. I have seen the literally life-changing impact of this organization for older adults, especially those with limited incomes. I am here to thank you for approving the issuance of these bonds, for which the city incurs no financial or legal obligation of any kind, but without which much-needed capital improvements could not be done. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, are there any public comments on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Madam City Clerk, have we received any written comments?
No written comments.
Okay, I'll now close a public hearing. What's the wish of the city council?
I move to adopt Resolution 8685.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? Did you get the second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Barrage.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sasego.
Yes. We want to item L1, consideration of Resolution Number 8692, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute a sub receipt agreements and any amendments and all other related documents associated with the encament resolution funding ERF 3R program for the amount not to exceed $4,155,600, Assistant City Manager Boatman.
Thank you, Mayor and council. For this item, I'd like to invite up Homeless Solutions Manager David Brunath to present
Good evening, city council, mayor, city leadership. So it's great news. I just want to bring back that city council did approve this ER3 acceptance back in December of, of 2024. We do have all the agreements set to go out to our community partners, $4.1 million to fund approximately 11 local agencies, pretty much all nonprofits, except a motel for motel vouchers. With this, some of the partners will be Salvation Army, Goodwill, Family Service Association, Church of Religious Science, Building Generation, Youth Hope, Redlands Chamber of Commerce, and a couple others. This will be funding 4.1 million to these entities for emergency shelter beds, so we will be expanding our beds to about double capacity what we have now. We will also be funding employment services. We will continue with Redlands Chamber, Goodwill Career Services, and Building Generation. And then we will continue our rapid rehousing, permanent housing program, where we can pay up to six months rental assistance and help clients find housing. So we've already housed through ERF 2 grant, 300-plus people in the last 18 months with that program. This will, this will basically just expand services. This grant will basically extend our services to June of 2027. So our current ERF 2 grant will expire June of 2026. This will just basically come behind that and, and extend all our services one year in the community. That's, that's my presentation. Is there any questions?
I'd just like to, to put a bow on this and kind of repeat some of the comments I made at the State of the City yesterday. These grants have been pretty transformational for us. We've seen almost a 5, a 60% reduction in our homeless population through the ERF 2 grant, use of the ERF 2 grant, and then also the State Home Key Grant. And this grant will continue to allow us to do the good work we've been doing with that. Lives are changing, and we're, we're not just putting people in housing temporarily, we're seeing them actually permanently taken off the streets. So kudos to David for all his hard work, and, and, you know, we really appreciate the council's leadership as we pursue these opportunities.
I, I would like, echo those comments to you and your staff, David, for the wonderful work that you do. You're committed and compassionate, and you said that maybe this night, or that this grant would take us to 27. What does the out-years look like in, in the grant funding opportunities to continue a program like this, or maybe a scaled back, or kind of what's the, the grant environment look like?
Well, the, as you, as I'm sure the council's aware, the state budget is in a lot of, is in flux constantly. Fortunately, they've continued to make funding available. It's hard to predict the weather, as they say. So we'll see what happens in the coming years, but homelessness remains a priority, I know of the governor. It remains a predominant concern of the citizens of the state, so we're hopeful that the, the funding streams will continue. And we're committed to utilizing that in the most effective way possible, in ways that, again, will, will really target permanently taking people off the streets, not just temporarily.
Yeah, and I think you all have done a great job in documenting the data and the numbers, so that we can show the improvements and have the data behind to support those grants moving forward. So I appreciate all the hard work. Any other comments or questions?
Well, I just want to say that I'm very proud of how Redlands is handling the homeless program. We've been very aggressive the last few years, and I'll put our plan up against, in fact, I think the, the state is kind of jealous, because we do it much better than they do it. We, we actually take the money in good, good use. And, you know, and I think there's some show. So I'm very, very proud of staff, and I'm proud of Redlands, that we'd be able to show the state that had a, had a compassion to the people that are, that are no longer housed.
All right, entertain a motion. Thank you, David, for your report. I'm sorry. Sorry. There's no public comment up here. Mr. Moderator, do we have any public comment on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. You, you can come on up, but fill out a paper before you leave. Fill out a sign-up sheet. You and Mr. Peasner. Okay.
Bruce Laycock. Human Good Affordable Housing has partnered with David, and we now have permanently housed in our affordable housing communities, people that transitioned from temporary housing with David's assistance into our communities. That's the kind of life-changing events that I'm talking about. They're living in a stable, quality residence. And without David and all of the partners that he spoke about, that couldn't happen. Thank you very much.
Yes.
What's the wish of the council?
Move the city council adopt Resolution Number 8692, and I further move that city council approve the sub recipients, as further detailed in the staff report, as single-source providers for the ERF-3R program.
Second. A motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Barrage.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sasego.
Yes. Moving on to item L2, a public hearing regarding a report on city vacancies and status of recruitment and retention efforts as required by Assembly Bill 2561, Government Code Section 3502.3, Human Resources and Risk Management, Director Mato.
Good evening, mayor and council. Staff report will be presented by Human Resource Manager McDonald, with the report to be followed by the Redlands Police Officer Association.
And I declare this an open and public meeting.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having me. Effective January 1st of 2025, AB 2561 mandates that California public agencies present updates on job vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts during a public hearing before their governing body at least once per fiscal year. The goal is to enhance transparency regarding staffing issues, and to address vacancies, and provide a forum for employee organizations and the public to engage in addressing ongoing Staffing challenges within local government include job vacancies, which is a significant problem for public sector, due to limited pool of qualified candidates, increased competition from the private sector, and evolving job expectations. High vacancy rates impact public ser, public service delivery and the workers who are forced to handle heavier workloads. handle heavier workloads, with understaffing leading to burnout and increased turnover that further impacts staffing challenges. Within the public sector, there is a statewide interest in ensuring that public agency operations are appropriately staffed and that high vacancy rates do not undermine the public employee labor relations. Our specific position data, as of December 2024, the city of Redlands had 595 budgeted full-time positions, 96 full-time staff separated from employment in 2024, and 110 were hired. AB 2561 requires that the public agency, upon request of the employer organization, include additional information if the vacancy rate exceeds 20% of the total number of authorized full-time positions. If it exceeded 20%, that additional information would include total vacancies, the number of applicants, the average time to fill, and the opportunities to improve compensation and working conditions. For the city of Redlands, as of December 24, all bargaining units have vacancy rates below 20%. I will outline each of those bargaining units for your information. The Redlands Association of Department Directors had a 0% vacancy rate. Redlands Association of Management Employees had a 5.3%, which took into account one opening out of 19. Redlands Association of Middle Management Employees had a 6.4% that encompassed five openings out of 78. Redlands Association of Fire Management Employees had a 0%. Redlands Association of Safety Management Employees had also 0%. Redlands Civil Service Employee Association had 12.7%, which encompassed seven openings out of 55, all of which are currently in background as of today. Redlands Professional Firefighters Association had a 7.4% vacancy rate, which encompassed four openings out of 54. And the Redlands Police Officers Association had a 19.8%, which represented 18 openings out of 19, again, all of which are currently in background. Teamsters had an 8.6 vacancy rate, which encompassed 24 openings out of 278 that are authorized. For our recruitment strategies, we have put a lot of effort into revamping our strategies to make sure that we are filling these positions. As they come open, we are leveraging social media platforms to promote the city, to promote the city, and to broaden the candidate outreach and support direct sourcing efforts. We have begun attending career fairs to connect with a diverse pool of candidates while also promoting the city and identifying potential talent for current and future openings. We have streamlined the hiring process through effective collaboration with department heads on the recruitment timeline. We are utilizing hiring incentives for hard-to-fill positions and prominently featuring them within our job postings to attract candidates. We are utilizing continuous job postings for hard-to-fill positions to establish a pool of qualified candidates for current and future vacancies. And development of a benefits guide to highlight our benefits offering to potential candidates. For our retention strategies, we have implemented an enhanced onboarding strategy to better integrate new hires and align them with organizational values. Additionally, we launched an onboarding video showcasing the city, its workforce, culture, mission, and values. Management and leadership workshops have been developed to equip current and emerging leaders within, with key skills in communication, decision-making, team building, and strategic thinking to foster organizational success and a culture of continuous growth. Tuition reimbursement supports employee career development as well as succession planning. There is a strategic focus on wellness to help reduce burnout through programs like fitness challenges, mental health resources, and both wellness and financial workshops. We have strengthened the employee engagement throughout targeted employee engagement incentives such as our MLB Opening Day, our Fall Festivals, and our Employee Appreciation Day to strengthen the overall culture and connection for our employees here at the city. We are also showcasing promotional and transfer opportunities through internal communication, through communication monitors, and citywide notifications to promote them from within and retain institutional knowledge. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the Council?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you for the report. My question is regarding research. Are we, are we doing any research into what other municipalities are offering and sort of measuring that against our salary and benefit offerings so that way when we do our next round of bargaining, we understand how we need to, you know, make improvements?
Yes, actually, a part of our research includes our ongoing classing comp that we're doing. That's going to be all encompassing, looking at all of our classifications to make sure that we are in line with other cities, as well as looking at compensation to make sure that we are at market value so that we can provide our employees here with a competitive advantage when it comes to bringing individuals over to the city. So we do want to make sure that we are competitive and that we are looking at other cities to also follow some of the things that they are doing for retention strategies. So I do reach out to other HR partners when I am looking at retention and recruiting strategies, as well as our ongoing classing comp.
So I had a question, or tell me what this looked like. The Wellness Initiative promoted a positive work environment to help reduce burnout. What does that look like? And also the fitness challenges, what does that look like?
So yes, we have previously had fitness challenges where we have a walkathon, or we had the Olympics challenge that we had when the Olympics were going on, where we challenged the employees to get so many steps per day, and they are able to win prizes. We also have our representative that comes in from nationwide for financial wellness. He has ongoing appointments with individuals to help them with their financial wellness. We've had, most recently, we've had for our wellness, we've had opportunities during lunch for individuals to come over, and they do meditation to, just for mental wellness. So we have ongoing strategies, and we provide those in our calendar each month, so the employees will know exactly what initiatives are going on for that month.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other comments from the, or questions for the city, from the City Council?
I just actually have a concern. We want to keep it under 20%, and I noticed the RPOA, 19.8, that's cutting it pretty thin. What are we doing to try to, everyone else has got well within reason, single digits. What are we doing to rectify this? I mean, it's very important that we have a good police force, not only just for the citizens, for our police officers, while they're not constantly being out there, and they have a tendency to get burnt out or tired and things like that.
Absolutely. Just to reiterate, that represented 18 openings of the 91 that they were budgeted for at the, at the end of 2024. And some of the concerns that we have had previously have been with the length of time that it's taken for our backgrounds. And so in order to help with that issue, we have taken the initiative to bring on some additional background investigators, and we also did a recent RFB to bring on an additional vendor for background. So hopefully that will speed up the process, and we're able to get those individuals hired at a much quicker rate than we have been able to, because that will lead to some individuals withdrawing from the process if the process takes too long. And so that's one of the things that we are, are looking at and that we've already actually implemented.
Because I know a lot of municipalities have been doing the same thing we are, and I'm sure we're probably losing some people out the back door because they're going to some other city. So, and then we can do to try to improve that and get good quality police officers. And I know this, I know I would appreciate that, and the citizens of Redlands will. So, and then we can do to help you facilitate that, let us know.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now call on the RPOA for request to speak.
Did they have our slides? Great, thank you. I'm Jeff from the RPOA, most you know me. Thanks for the opportunity to let us come up here and speak about the vacancy rate. Our data was collected from May 12th through the 16th from our local police associations, and we just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of show the staffing issues from our point of view and how we kind of see it out on the streets and, and dealing with other agencies. So currently, you do have 98 sworn police officers budgeted for the city. We have 23 officer vacancies. One of those is going to be filled with an academy graduate, I think, in the next week. That last line there, lateral applications are closed, that has changed. I'm going to address that on a subsequent slide. We wanted to kind of give an overall of what our staffing looks like with all of our assignments within the police department. So your current patrol staffing is five patrol teams. Minimum staffing is at least one supervisor and six officers or corporals. That changed in 2023. We used to have seven patrol teams. Those two extra patrol teams consisted of a swing shift that normally started from noon to 12:30 a.m., or if it was a weekend shift, they would start at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, and they'd work till 2:30. Those two shifts were eliminated for staffing reasons. The minimum staffing, when we had seven teams, was one supervisor and four officers or corporals. So we lost two teams, went to five, and they increased the minimum staffing a little bit from the reduction of the teams. Your multiple enforcement team, this is going to be your, your gang enforcement, your warrant service, fugitive apprehension, surveillance. They're going to handle your, I think my neighbor is selling narcotics out of their house type complaints. The sergeant on that team is on long-term injury. As you can see, the rest of the positions are vacant except for one with an officer on FMLA. Your community engagement team was the new team that was done with the reorganization by the chief of police when she was hired. That is consisting of a sergeant, a corporal, and four officers. There's a one-officer vacancy on that team, and I'm sure you see many of them because they're mostly everybody you see on our social media. So. The homeless outreach was the additional positions the Council approved effective January, or I'm sorry, July 1st, 2024, which consisted of an extra sergeant position for officers. That team has yet to be staffed at this point. Our community policing is two assigned officers, one's vacant and one is filled with our K-9 officer. Traffic is a traffic corporal detective, which is currently filled. There are two officers for the traffic unit, those are vacant. Investigations has two officers assigned to assist detectives with investigations. One is a three-year assignment, and one is a one-year assignment, and that three-year assignment's currently vacant. School resource officers, three. You have RHS, Citrus Valley High School, and the middle school, SRO. Those are all filled, and those are reimbursed by Redlands Unified School District. So ongoing overtime that we're experiencing right now, we have, because of the vacancy in traffic, we have two traffic enforcement positions on a 10-hour shift, five days a week, two positions. We have swing shift overtime on Fridays and Saturday nights, that's two positions, and this can be anywhere from an officer to a sergeant level. We have ongoing patrol shift coverage. As you can tell, four of the patrol teams are one assigned over the minimum staffing, and then the weekend team actually is at minimum staffing. So if anyone has to take a training day or a day off, or they're on vacation, we're having to backfill those positions with overtime. Currently, we're running 10 hours overtime on Sunday through July 1st because of an issue with our custody service provider with their financial contract. There was an issue, and so there's an officer on overtime that has to cover on Sunday until the new fiscal year. There's also grant overtime. There's ongoing ABC grants where we're doing tobacco enforcement, alcohol enforcement at the local restaurants and bars. You see the DUI checkpoints out there, Redlands Bicycle Classic, Firefighters Car Show, concerts. Those are all overtime positions, and we're asking our staff to fill all these special events with extra work. So we did, we did a little survey of our, our local agency vacancy rates, and, and so one thing we do is we work a lot with our local police associations from Claremont all the way out to Indio. I do meet with the presidents once a month at our local PORAC meeting, which is our state association. We also do co-training with them during the month, and, and so we, we kind of get what's going on in their departments. But currently, we went over Redlands. Lateral applications, I'm proud to report, thank you, HR, are open as of Thursday of last week, and, and the intent is to continue to keep that open. We, we feel that is a huge step in the right direction. But as you can see, our, our local agencies are, we're falling behind. The closest vacancy rate locally is Colton Police Department with a 12% rate. Mostly, everybody is within the, the 5% to 10%. There's a few agencies, once their academy graduates graduate in two weeks, they will be completely full, and that would be Upland, Ontario, and Hemet Police Department. So some of the issues we see, so there's a high degree of background failure when you're applying to be a police officer. We're, we're hopeful, all of our vacancies have a person in background slotted to fill that. However, the rate of failure is usually anecdotally around 70%, and that's going to be people withdraw from the process for personal reasons. They may get offered another job at another agency, and they'll withdraw from our process, or they have a background issue where they're going to get disqualified. So the degree of failure in backgrounds is very high for police officers. That's one reason why we really want to see the continuous recruiting for lateral police officers, is once you have somebody fall out of the process, in order to replace that person, you'd have to open up applications again, screen them, they'll have to go through a physical test and an initial interview. So you're, you're talking two, three, four months down the road before you can replace that person that withdrew or failed out of your process. If you're continuously recruiting, you might have an applicant that's already prescreened, been through an interview and a physical test, and they're ready to get into a background, and you can get them in within days. So a little of our data from our crime analysts. Since January of 2024, we've had 51 people enter into backgrounds. Out of that, we hired five lateral police officers, two academy trainees. One academy trainee failed, and one lateral police officer did not meet field training and was let go. So some things that we think that we need that would help the situation is the continuous lateral officer recruitment. These are experienced police officers that can go through a accelerated field training course. If we hire an academy trainee, they're going to be in the academy for six months, and then they're going to be in six months of field training. That person's not going to be a solo officer for at least a year. That currently, like I previously stated, we've been working with HR on that. They've been working with police management, and that is now open continuously, and they intend to, to keep that open currently. The speed of the process, from talking with our, our local agencies and associations, the preferred speed would be to get an entire process done in 90 days. If we can get backgrounds done in 30 to 45 days, that is dependent on the applicant. Failure to provide documents, failure to provide references, things like that, can slow down the process. But as long as we can accelerate this process on our end and, and keep the delays mostly with the applicants, and at least, you know, we're doing our part, on the city's part, to be as expeditious as possible. The retired and new background investigators, we did hire two. We would recommend we hire as, as many as we can, and the reason for that is we do have a contracted provider for backgrounds, and, but they can only do the, they recruit backgrounds. If we have a lateral police officer come in, the lateral police officer has to be done by our in-house background investigator or the retired and new attendants. So there's three currently. So if you're talking, you have 21 vacancies, that means a background investigator's handling seven backgrounds. So the more we can get of that to, to spread the wealth out and get these done quicker... So the more we can get of that to, to spread the wealth out and get these done quicker, in our opinion, would be helpful. A recruitment budget. With the amount of vacancies we have, the city has over the last several years saved millions and millions of dollars in salary savings of police officers. If we are able to legally divert some of that into a recruitment budget, that would help bring people to our city, advertise what we have to offer. We feel that would be helpful. We have more autonomy by our training division and that's not a knock on our human resources division at all or anything like that. But when you have two departments that are trying to accomplish the same goal and, and working out schedules and things like that, sometimes it can slow down the process. If we're able to streamline that a little bit more for scheduling or testing purposes being done by our training department, we feel that would be helpful. It is pretty industry standard amongst a lot of our local agencies that the training divisions typically do the in-between work where HR posts the job, they screen the applicants, they produce the eligibility lists and then as far as the physical test or the interviews, it's kind of passed off to the training division. Training division conducts the, the process, they complete the process and it's handed back over to HR for final processing and a job offer. Finally, we also think that, you know, matching starting wages and time banks when appropriate of officers that are coming to our agency. We had this conversation in a meeting a couple of weeks ago. There are situations where there are people that are going to have to take a pay cut. Say if you hire an officer from Irvine PD or something like that, they are one of the most highest paid agencies in Southern California, you're probably not going to be able to compete with that. But that's why we put when appropriate, we should try to be meeting or exceeding the current salary of where that experienced police officer is coming from. So they're not taking pay cuts. That concludes our presentation. Happy to answer any questions from our association point of view and like to thank HR has been working with us and, you know, they're motivated to help us out. As you can see, our vacancy rate is pretty much double what the, the second in the agents or association in the city is. As representatives of our police officers, we, we are getting concerned about burnout and wellness and, you know, lack of, lack of resources to respond to calls for service. So we feel it is getting to, I wouldn't say a critical point, but a serious point that, you know, need to expedite, make a few changes. Any questions I can answer?
Yeah, we have a question.
I have one on the recruitment piece. We talked about recruitment and recruitment budget. Who is, how is the recruiting being done? Do, I mean, we're short on people, so I can't imagine we have people assigned to recruiting. But are we doing like job fair stuff or what's, what's happening from a, how are we getting out there and saying, here's what we have to offer to try to attract people? Is it just kind of word of mouth? Or what are we using? Do you know?
The, the biggest is social media. That's always the biggest and that, that is going to be your number one, putting out content. Any agency will tell you that that's number one. I know that the department has also been putting up billboards in specific targeted areas. One of them's around West Valley Detention Center where there's
People getting out of jail?
A lot of experienced deputies, a lot of experienced deputies work in that area. I think the deputy chief, do you know of any other advertising or recruiting?
Yeah, what I can, I can speak to the social media part. So that is the, the main force. That is what most agencies use to do their recruitment currently. What we do do with our social media is we're able to pay a small fee to boost our social media. So it goes out, any of our recruitment posts that we put out automatically go out into a geofenced area. So anybody coming into that geofenced area automatically gets our recruitment. So part of that geofenced area is West Valley Detention Center. It's the banning jails. It's all the current agencies in our area. So if they, if any, any officer goes into that geofenced area, they automatically get our posts and we have, we've asked our recruits that were currently in background. Many of them said that's how they found out about our openings were from those social media posts.
Are we using, obviously they're on the younger side, but are we doing anything community college wise? Are we doing anything? How big is the explorer program? Kind of trying to build that, you know, cultivate those future people? I mean, I know we have a need there, but it doesn't seem like we're making a lot of progress or a lot of headway. So the definition of insanity is continuing to do the same thing over and over and expecting a different result, right? So I mean, do we, do we, is there, is there somebody we reach out to to say we need some strategies? We need some new options? I'm just, you know, curious what else our possibilities could be.
Yeah, our, our vice president, Mazza Shabi is our explorer, explorer advisor. He can tell a little bit about how many explorers we have, their experience and, and we do have some that are moving towards applying for recruit.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't prepared for this. Thanks, Jeff. But we do have one explorer right now who's in the background process. He is, I believe, towards the end. I'm not 100% sure, but I know he's done polygraph. He's past that and I think he's starting his backgrounds.
Only assigned to a background investigator, yes.
Yeah, but we have used the explorer program to recruit. I can say during my 14 years as explorer advisor, we probably have at least 12, 12 to 15 explorers that have become police officers. Most of them here. So it is a great, and they're from, they're, they know how we work in Redlands and they're familiar with how we do things. And that's one of, I feel, one of the best ways to bring young people in. So we do do recruitments at the high schools. We put a booth up and we recruit at the high schools. For a couple of years, it wasn't cool to be a cop or explorer. So it was, we were really lean, like three or four, but now it's starting to come back. Now we have like, I believe about 12 to 13, is that right? Right? Correct, Eric? 12 or 13, which is not, still not a lot. At one point we were like 25, so we're working on it. So, but yeah. Explorer program is a great program and, and it's working.
And I get it, laterals are faster and that's, that's great. You know, we can move them along quicker, but there's a lot of people out there that, that don't know that they want to be police officers. We just need to, to tell them. So whatever opportunities that we have, even, you know, even DUI checkpoints or whatnot, if we're getting information out there, you know, maybe there are people that aren't, aren't using social media that we can, you know, find a way to connect with and at least steer them to the social media, you know, whatever options we have. But, but certainly if there's, if there's an avenue to, to donate or to, to contribute some money to that, you know, from a funding standpoint, that would certainly be good to add that at some point, you know, when that time is appropriate. So thank you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm done.
No, I'm sorry. I think one of the things, I don't know if you remember that we, we passed a, which I voted against, by the way, that if you're a police officer, you wouldn't, if you have, you wouldn't have a relative like your son or daughter. We might want to rethink that. I mean,
It's coming back, I think, in the next
Is it coming back?
Yeah.
You know, we've asked for.
We, we've been contacted about HR with the updated rules and regs and that is in the process.
Okay. Cause I think that would help. I, I don't know why we did it in the first place. I think that was silly to do it. You're, you're allowed to be real, you know, casual on things. You say you don't want to say critical. I say it's critical. Okay? And the number one, an elected official is protect the public. And I think our number one, just to be, make sure that you guys are taken care of and you're not, that you don't have burnout. Nothing's worse than when you, someone, an officer tired, you make a mistake and then the officer can be, is, is going to be harmed. The public's going to be harmed. So I think we, we should really do whatever we can to make sure that we get your numbers. Cause I'm sure we're going to have some retirees coming up pretty soon as well. So it's not going to get any better. Our number one goal should be to really get some more police officers to help you guys out.
Yeah, I think that's my biggest concern is burnout and, you know, overtime's great for a little while, but then after a while you need time for your, for yourself or your family and be able to recover, recover and, and rest. So my concern is just the, the number of times we ask our, our officers to put in the overtime to cover not only their primary job and function as to, in new public safety, but we have a lot of other events that are happening that, you know, take you away from the primary responsibility, which is public safety. So.
The last thing I'll add is we've asked for the staffing or I've asked for a staffing report that we're seeing, which I appreciate. It's coming on a monthly basis to show where the vacancies are, particularly in the police department, because that's where the highest percentage is. If that were to, to translate to fire or somewhere else, I would ask for, for the same thing there. But to ask the, you know, city staff to really kind of keep an eye on that and at least, you know, continue that on a monthly basis, but on, on a quarterly basis, expect to, we're going to have some questions about, you know, what we've done to improve the numbers. And if we haven't improved the numbers, you know, why and what are the next steps and how do we, how do we get creative to figure out a way? Because this has been at least a year now that I've been kind of watching the numbers and we just don't seem to be, you know, decreasing our vacancy rate. So we need, we need to figure out a better way or a different way or another way to, to make some headway on that.
One challenge with the, the physical event recruiting that you referred to is the only person assigned to training and recruitment is a sergeant. And as HR said, you know, that sergeant is handling, you know, approximately 20 people in backgrounds. He's also handling non-s sworn too. So you're talking dispatchers, records, clerks. So this person is communicating and dealing with possibly 25 people in the background process. There's just, there's nowhere, there's no time to even go to an event. So we try to utilize, you know, social media and other forms of media just because we don't have the manpower to, to go to events. We
That's the problem. We get this far behind, right?
RPOA, RPOA events, special events that we're out at, we all try to, you know, use those as recruiting tools. We had a booth at the firefighters car show and the bike classic. We try to use those as recruiting tools as well, as much as we can.
Where are we at? I, you may not know, but like on dispatcher staffing, are they down as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, if you'd like, I can give you some current numbers on what we have in background. Yes, we are down at dispatchers, but we have five dispatcher applicants currently in backgrounds, various stages, polygraph or assigned to background investigators. Additionally, we have gone out to colleges. We've gone out to the university, CBU. We speak to the sports team specifically. We do that. One of the issues was job fairs and having recruitment boosts was not having the continuous lateral openings. It's not, we found that going to job fairs, when you don't have an open position for them to apply to, isn't very productive. So now that we have that ability to do that, that's going to be extremely helpful when we have those recruiting boosts to actually have a position for people to apply to for laterals. If you'd like, I can give you the current numbers of what we have in backgrounds.
I, I saw it on the thing. If the rest of the council wants it, that's fine.
I have the most up to date as of today because it changes constantly. Like Jeff said, the, the failure rate is high. So we do have a lot. So we currently have 14 recruits in backgrounds. 10 of them are assigned to background investigators. Four of them are awaiting polygraph test. We have six laterals in backgrounds. Some of those will be done, we expect in the next couple of weeks. We have one officer trainee who will be graduating next week from the academy. And we have one lateral who is currently negotiating his pay and salary with human resources. Once that's complete, he'll go to a psych and medical and we'll be able to get him going. With the, with that number though, likely, like Jeff said, the failure rate is high. The likelihood of all of them passing background probably is not high, which is why the continuous lateral recruitment is very good. I know as of this evening, we had, already had five applicants and it just opened this weekend. So we already have five applicants in that queue.
And just for the benefit of the council, the, the background process for dispatchers is essentially the same as it is for police officers now. So it's, it takes an extensive period of time to fill those vacancies as well.
Correct. However, we do feel with the addition of the retired and new attendants, as well as utilizing some in-house officers that have been to background investigator school for like record specialist, some of those, it'll take some of the pressure off of our current background investigators. So we anticipate those being done far more quickly than what we've been dealing with. It really was the, the logjam in that was the backgrounds and how long it takes to do them. As well as there is the, the added part of, it, some of that is on the applicants and we do find that frustration where sometimes they're not as open to the background investigators and getting them documents that are needed to complete the background. And those are audited. Dispatch and police officer are, backgrounds are audited by post every year. So that's why we have to make sure that everything is perfect on those.
So it sounds like there are some positive timelines that could be completed. How many officers do you think you could, we could eventually hire and have, you know, on duty within the next few months or so? Okay, with the end of the year.
I don't know if I could project that. It's, it's been tough. I mean, I think in December we had 12 people in backgrounds and we hired one lateral out of that. So you're, it's a high degree of failure rate. So it's, it's, it's in the, it's in the speed and the numbers. You have, you have to get these people processed because these jobs are so highly sought after and they're, and they're applying with multiple other agencies. So the speed and just when, when these people are ready to make the move on a job, yeah, you know, some of that is, is on the applicant where they, they cause a delay. But as much as we can control it, yeah, it's, it's a numbers game.
I think it's important to note one thing on laterals. There are two kinds of laterals that we, we hire. There's the laterals that have been police officers for a while that have street experience. They've been on patrol. They can do a much shorter FTO program, a 10-week post mandates that they do a 10-week FTO program. But if we hire, for example, somebody that's a jail deputy at West Valley Detention Center or something like that, they don't have any street experience, so they still have to do a full six-month FTO program. So there is a little bit of this, it's, it's better for us to hire laterals, obviously, that have street experience. We can get them on the street faster. However, when it comes to laterals, we do get a lot of deputies, that type of thing that have jail experience or don't have street experience. And they do have to do a full six-month FTO program.
You, you made a mention about somebody transferring and pay negotiation and whatnot. We don't have people that are taking pay cuts to come. I mean, are we trying to get them at the same level that they were at to incentivize them to come over from another agency or, obviously Irvine, I think we talked about it as a different story, but like local around us, are we competitive in that?
We bring them in generally at the, the, the years of service that they have. Basically, we bring them in, try to bring them in at the step that's commiserate. That's consistent with that.
Okay.
But some of our pay is, is built into our certificates and some of them may not have those certificates. So they may not get some of that pay because they don't have those certificates. And a lot of that is based on education, that type of thing, years on, years of service on. So a large majority of our pay is based into those certificates. So even if we brought somebody in at a step two, they may take a pay cut because they don't have, say, an intermediate certificate that would give them a significant raise. And that's a matter of either time on or what education they have. There's a couple of different rules that posts have on what, when those certificates can be issued.
We're not bringing them in like at the bottom of the pay scale if they've got five years of experience somewhere?
The police chief looks at the experience and then recommends to me to have to approve anything above the bottom step. And so we try to be consistent because we also don't want to bring people in. Well, if they're coming, they're coming for a reason here. It may not be solely salary. But we also don't want to create a lot of internal equity issues where we brought someone in and just because they worked somewhere where they're making more money, but they have less experience or fewer certificates or something like that, they get paid more than another officer who brings substantially more experience. So we try to balance the, what they're bringing to the table, their experience, their education, their certificates, all of those things to try to keep things within certain ranges. Currently, there are some cities we're not going to be able to compete with on salary. And one of the reasons we're doing a compensation and classification study is to find out where we are in the market so that we can, if we are below market in any of our positions, not just police, so that we can start addressing those shortfalls because two things, we certainly don't want to become a training ground for everybody else. We invest a lot in our employees and so we want to make sure that they stay for a long time. Something I think we should also look at is in this latest budget, we substantially improved the benefits for starting officers because that was a significant problem coming out of the great recession times when changes were made and officers were having to come out of pocket for healthcare substantially. And so the council approved major changes and, and many more resources towards that. Also, when you look at, we had, I think, five positions that were listed on one of the slides that were new positions. So that adds to our vacancy rate. And when you say it's, it's difficult, it looks like we're not making any headway. Well, we added five positions. Also, when you look at the seven, seven command staff, all of them didn't have the, these positions in the last few years. So when they were promoted, that also created a ripple effect, which also, you know, exacerbated our, our, our issue. Nationally, I've talked to other city managers. I've also talked to relatives who've worked for sheriff departments as HR directors. And there is a difficulty in finding quality candidates to fill a lot of vacancies. That, that is, that is something that's happening nationally. We want to make sure we're not resting on that and just saying, oh, well, you know, everyone else is having a problem. So are we. So we're, we're actively trying to work on it and we are trying different things. We don't want to fall in that insanity area.
Thank you.
Valley College used to have a program. Has they still have that program? I mean, the only reason I said that because my ex-sun-in-law went through that program. Unfortunately, wasn't able to get a job, but most people that graduated with him did. Do they still have that?
So the academy is run through Valley College. So to go to the academy, you have to actually enroll in Valley College.
Okay, so that's.
I think that's probably the program that you're thinking about. So you, you, essentially, when you graduate from the academy, you graduate with some college credits because you've been enrolled.
At Valley College.
It's run through Valley College. So there's a, the sheriff's department runs the academy, but the Valley College is a, is the, the educational component of it that, um, everybody has to go to. So anybody that goes to the academy has to enroll in Valley College.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Association point of view, we say pale.
Okay, uh, Michael Peasner, a public comment?
Michael, Michael Peasner, thank you, I'll be brief. Part of the agenda, uh, item here mentions retention and I haven't heard hardly any talk about retention. I've heard a lot about the vacancy rate, um, but I haven't seen anything about the turnover rate. If you look at the numbers, you hired somewhere around 110 out of 595 positions, that's somewhere close to a 20% turnover rate. To me, that seems high, 20%. I'd say anything over 10% is probably something to be concerned about. So I guess I would encourage you to consider that perspective in your discussion is, is the turnover rate? And how does your turnover rate compare to other cities? Is 20% normal, is, is it high, is it low? I think that's worth something looking into. The other part of retention is doing exit interviews. Why are people leaving? Is it pay, is it, you know, culture, is it burnout? I think that could be also something that you should look at in terms of looking at, um, reducing, um, your turnover and increasing retention. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to respond to any of those? Believe we do do exit in.
We do do exit interviews, uh, basically we do everything he said.
Yeah, that's what I thought, thank you. Robert Seja?
Everyone Butcher is my last name, so it's okay, no worries. But, uh, Seja? Yeah, I've, I've heard people say, um, KJ for some reason, so you're, this isn't the first time. But, um, good evening, city council members and Mayor Sosito, my name is Roberto Seja. I am a graduate student as well as an instructor at California State University San Bernardino. I just want to give a public comment regarding like, you know, in terms of recruitment. I understand burnout, um, I myself as an instructor and understaffed, um, because of, you know, with the influx of students, um, being able to, um, what's it called? Instruct at least 30 or more students is pretty hectic, especially grading assignments and stuff like that. So burnout is really serious, um, as well as being able to have a wellness program and being able to adhere to the employees. So I understand there's a, there's a concern about reaching out to those, to those people. But it's also another thing to be able to maintain the current employees as well. For instance, um, being able to, you know, move up the ladder in terms of being merit over like, hey, I know you, so therefore you're going to get promoted. Kind, that kind of language. Hold on, I had other notes, but basically that, that was just been, that's one of my main concerns is just if you're more concerned about the, you know, recruitment wise. Another concern would just be being able to maintain employees here and so, and being able to give them a reason why, hey, you should be able to work here. And another concern is that lately with the current, um, with the current administration giving, you know, public mistrust with government, um, offices and public, um, service. You know, it's always, um, to be able to remind citizens of Redlands to be able to assure them that, hey, this government works for you, will work, benefit for you in the long run. So that's just a public comment I wanted to give, but thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Uh, Madam City Clerk, did we receive any written comments?
None.
Okay, are there any public comment, no, nothing on Zoom? I'll close the public hearing, what's the wish of the council?
Move to receive and file the vacancy report and status of recruitment and retention efforts as required by Assembly Bill 2561.
Second. Motion and second, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
And Mayor Sosito.
Yes, moving on to item L three, consideration of a professional service agreement with Carl Warren and Company LLC for a third party liability claims administration for the amount not to exceed 663,735. Human Resources Risk Manager Director Mato.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item involves a third party claim administration vendor agreement that will be ending this June 30th. That was a three-year agreement. After conducting a request for proposals, Carl Warren and Company LLC was selected as a new vendor for the provider of our liability claims management service. At this time, staff is recommending that the city council approve the professional services agreement for Carl Warren and Company LLC. To be the city's third party administrator for liability claims management services. This will be a three-year agreement with two one-year options included. At that time, um, that concludes the report and more than happy to answer questions.
Any questions from council for staff? I don't have any public comment sheets, nothing on Zoom. What's the wish of the council?
Move the, I move to approve the professional services agreement with Carl Warren and Company LLC for third party liability claims.
Second.
Motion and a second, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosito.
Yes, item L four, consideration of a fire, of the fire department's continued participation in CONFIRE joint powers authority for fiscal year 2025, 2026. And the authorization to pay the associated annual service fee in the amount not to exceed 922,557, Fire Chief Sessler.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In August 1990, the city council formally approved a membership of Redlands Fire Department into the CONFIRE JPA, which included Colton, Loma Linda, Rialto, and San Bernardino County Fire Departments. CONFIRE has grown now to nine member agencies, uh, that adding Rancho Cucamonga Fire Protection District, Chino Valley Fire Protection, Victor Valley Fire, and Apple Valley Fire Protection District. The primary function of CONFIRE is our 911 dispatch for emergency medical services and fire emergencies, information technology support, and our MIS Management Information Services. This is our annual fee of 920,557 dollars. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from, for the chief? No, no public comments, written public comments, nothing on Zoom. What's the wish of the council?
Move to approve the continued participation of the fire department in the CONFIRE JPA and authorized payment of the associated annual service fee in the amount not to exceed 922,557 dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosito.
Yes, I'm moving on to item L five, consideration of a five-year professional service agreement with ICS Intellisys Inc. for cloud. V O P I L services, uh, migration in the amount not to exceed 74,601 dollars. And a five-year master service agreement with Ring Central Inc. for the corresponding phone hardware, software, and volp. As a service in the amount not to exceed 480, 85,4584, Management Services Director Garcia.
Thank you so much, Mayor and members of the council. Here to give us a brief presentation tonight is Eric Owens, our IT manager.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As you mentioned, the item before you is, uh, for approval for an agreement with ICS Intellisys Inc. as well as with Ring Central for the new telephone system, hardware, software, and voice over IP as a service. The city's current phone system was implemented in 2014 and has served the city well. In 2024, the city received notice that our MyTel phone system was going to be end of support in the upcoming years. In 2024, the Division of Innovation and Technology released an RFP to solicit a new phone system. We received 15 responses and, uh, through a selection committee process, it was found that ICS Intellisys Inc. proposal with Ring Central as a solution was the highest ranked proposal. Some of the benefits of moving to Ring Central include, uh, some significant cost savings by moving away from traditional phone line services, which are continuing to increase in price. There will be an increased collaboration with an all-in-one platform for voice, video messaging, and file sharing. And Ring Central is entirely cloud-based, providing increased flexibility for the city's workforce. Additionally, with the approval of these agreements, we'll be replacing the fleet of desk phones throughout the city. That being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
When you say, uh, replacing the desk phones that, at every desk, at every workstation?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, and so we're going to be doing that here at this, uh, at this property here. Will we be integrate that at the new city, at the new city council or the new city hall?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other question, I don't have any speaker slips. I don't see anybody on Zoom. What's the wish of the council?
I move the city council, approve the professional services agreement with ICS Intellisys Inc. for cloud V volp, excuse me, cloud VoIP. Migration services for five years in the amount not to exceed 74,64 and 61 dollars. And I further move the city council, approve the master service agreement with Ring Central Incorporated, uh, for corresponding phone hardware, software, and VoIP. As a service in an amount not to exceed 485,548 dollars.
Second, motion and a second, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Sosito.
Yes, moving on to item L six.
I will have to mention, if anybody could do that 10 times in a row, real quick, that, that, hats off to you.
L six, consideration of a citywide annual purchase order for miscellaneous tools, equipment, and supplies for fiscal year 2025, 2026. For a total amount, for a total not to exceed 1,080, Management Services Director Garcia.
Thank you again, Mayor and members of the council. On behalf of the city departments, our purchasing division respectfully requests your approval of four citywide annual purchase orders. For the procurement of general equipment, supplies, and services as outlined in the staff report before you. We would like to highlight that through the use of cooperative purchasing agreements and by leveraging the city's, uh, purchasing power and economies of scale. We anticipate a savings of approximately 115,000 dollars compared to standard wholesale and retail pricing for the upcoming fiscal year. These expenditures have been appropriately budgeted within each, uh, department's budget. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from staff?
Any questions, I do have a comment. I am adamantly against giving any business to Loews. I've had nothing but problems with them on a personal basis and I don't feel comfortable voting yes for them. And I've had other people, including my son-in-law, who's a contractor, has had some problems with Loews. So, um, everybody else that I'm, I'm fine with, but I'm, I'm really would like to, uh, relook at that. If, are we able to pull them and just maybe go with, uh, Home Depot and, and Office and the other ones?
What, what type of service does Loews?
Same as Home Depot though, right? I mean, they're the same thing, don't they?
What I would say is that both are operationally necessary because if one store is out of something, the staff can go procure it at the other store. It's, it's pretty essential to our operations. So when you have last minute things that go on with an event, we need it right then and there. And if it's not at Home Depot, it'll be at Loews, we use them interchangeably, they're both very important.
And if we pull them out of this contract, then if we do go to those, we'll end up spending more.
I think the other thing to consider is sometimes, uh, our field staff are more closer to one facility or the other. So it's a matter of time and, and movement that they're able to go to Loews or to Home Depot, depending on where they need, where their workstation is at.
We are going to have, uh, Ace Hardware real soon, is my understanding from the report, is that right?
Next contract.
Yeah, well, I'll be here pretty soon, but, um, I, I said, I just personally, my, my feeling is that when you have bad experience, I would hate to. I just can't feel comfortable voting yes with Loews, that's all, so.
Are there any, I don't have any public comments, I, I don't see anything on Zoom, what's the wish of the council?
I move the, I move to approve the citywide annual purchase orders with Loews, Fastenal, Home Depot, and Office Depot for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Second.
Motion and a second, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric.
No.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
And Mayor Sosito.
Yes, uh, moving on to item L seven, consideration of a sole source purchase for 800 megahertz APX 6500 and APX 6000 portable radios for Motorola Solutions. In the amount not to exceed 820,337 cents, 31 dollars and 37 cents. Rate, uh, Deputy Chief, slide.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The County of San Bernardino Information Services Department, ISD, provides 800 megahertz radio equipment maintenance services per their agreement with the city of Redlands. The police department is currently using 25-year-old 800 megahertz portable and mobile radios for their daily operations. Unfortunately, due to the age of this equipment, the police department has been, been informed by ISD that the necessary parts for repairs are no longer available, rendering the radios unserviceable. Because the majority of the police department's communication is done via the 800, 800 megahertz radio system, alternative solutions were sought. The Redlands Police Department requests the purchase of 40 new 800 megahertz APX 6000 portable radios and 77 APX 6500 in-car mobile radios. And miscellaneous adapter parts and batteries to replace the current aging equipment, which was purchased approximately 25 years ago. These radios will be installed inside police vehicles as well as assigned to police personnel, which is vital for the department's operational efficiency, safety, and emergency response capabilities. Currently, all department radios are Motorola. Motorola Solutions is the sole manufacturer of these radios and their proprietary technology ensures compatibility with San Bernardino County's ISD's existing communication infrastructure. Which will help streamline integration, reduce costs, and minimize downtime. And I'm available for any questions.
Just really quickly, does the number 40 represent any amount, uh, and it doesn't matter if it's specific or not, but any amount of radios that will be, uh, put like is saved for backup, just in case one gets destroyed for one reason or another?
Yes, we always have, uh, spare radios. We also have radios that we need and that we keep in the command post for various emergencies, uh, natural disasters, critical incidents, um, as well as all of our volunteers, explorers. They all utilize those radios also.
Thank you.
Is this, so has this replacement already started? Because obviously 40s are not, not enough to outfit the entire department.
Correct, this is the second half of the, the purchase that we've requested, so we have already started this integration.
Got it, okay, oh.
Yeah, I, I seem as, these are 25 years old, is, am I correct? These radios that we have?
Yes, the ones that we're asking to replace.
Okay, and then we're, we're trying to replace our, our phones that are 11 years old. Why are we falling behind on technology? Why aren't we keeping up with it? That seems like a big, seems like we're waiting a long time before we're upgrading, I.
As far as the phone system is concerned, it hasn't been working, uh, but as, as often the case, uh, with, uh, MyTel and Motorola, actually usually more often, more frequently, uh, they end of life it. They tell us that at a certain date in the future, we're not going to support the technology anymore. So therefore you have a choice of either going with our newer equipment or somebody else's. So I would say as far as the phone system is, we've gotten a lot of great use out of that. As far as the phones, as far as the radios go, um, I'm not sure how many of the radios are actually 25 years old. It's probably 25-year-old technology that has been used and we've just replaced those radios over time. And we're now upgrading to the newer technology.
Thank you.
There are no other questions, I'll move to approve the sole source purchase order with Motorola Solutions in an amount not to exceed 820,031 dollars, 37 cents.
Second.
Motion and a second, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Beric.
Yes.
Councilmember Tejeda.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shaw.
Yes.
And Mayor Sosito.
Yes. Uh, now we go to item M, which is individual council member announcements or reports on activities, and we'll start on this end.
Thank you, I was going to ask if I could go first. The end of the school year arrived, uh, this for me, I know some teachers are probably still working at this time. But at the end of the school year, we, uh, celebrated and honored, uh, those professionals who are retiring both ends, certificated teachers and classified members of our, um, education system. So that was bittersweet this year. Sad to see some long-serving, uh, very experienced teachers retire. I attended my daughter's graduation and, and, uh, celebrated that for her. Also, our graduation for the school district that I work for. Attended our, our P O A fundraiser for Seth Franklin, uh, rest in peace. Also was there with other council members. We had the Memorial Day celebration at Hillside Memorial Cemetery, uh, we were there for that. I attended Bats and Badges and also the State of the City. Those were the events I attended.
I just want to say thank you to, uh, the city staff and the chamber. Yesterday's State of the City was, uh, was a great event. The. The briefings that were provided were relevant. They were interesting to people, a lot of positive feedback. So thanks to everybody that put in a lot of effort on that yesterday, and it was great to see all of the department directors there, so thank you.
All right. You'll go last, okay? That's right. Again, my compliment to State of the City, and it was done a little over an hour, which is amazing. We had enough information, everybody, I think it was great, because I've gone to this, my eleventh one, I think. Went to the Fireman's Car Show, which was firefighter's car show. It was fantastic, big crowds. There was over four hundred cars there. They also had an art fair across the way, which we went to see. Also went for Seth Franklin's fundraiser. Thank you for putting that on. We have to take care of our police officers. Bats and Badges was fantastic. I think I ate too much, though, too many hot dogs. Anyway, that's it.
I went to the Blue Zones Walk at Brookside Park, as well as the Redlands Festival of the Arts and the Firefighter's Car Show. I had a meeting, a monthly meeting with my climate policy council. They're so dedicated, and we meet year-round, even though they have the option to take a summer break, they still want to continue meeting. And otherwise, yeah, the State of the City as well was great yesterday.
Yeah, I'll just report on, I want to thank the city manager's office and all of his staff for putting the presentation together for the State of the City. I think it's a better format. It's very concise. It gives a more perspective to the citizens and the business community about what the city is doing, where it's going, and I really appreciate all that. I appreciate all the input from our directors, and I just want to highlight the great success that your staff has done to be able to put that together, and I just want to highlight everybody's support for that. And so that concludes my report. Many of the things that everybody else said, I was at those same events, so no sense repeating it. We stand adjourned to June seventeenth. Thank you.